Good evening, everyone. This is the June 15th work session of Borough Council. Mr. Galey is joining us virtually. And the first item of business is a public hearing for an ordinance relative to parking.
Okay, I'll take over here, Don. The up on the board, the darkened paragraph is what we're trying to get accomplished in this ordinance. There's three sections to it, basically. First piece, it's Chapter 77, to add a residential permit parking area A to 200 block of Lacy Street between Maple Alley and South Franklin Street. Next piece is to add a free stop somewhere at intersections of Minor and Darlington Street, Minor and New Street. That's it. And the third piece is a no parking, that we kind of went around and around, parking committee with this, a no parking eight to 11, south side of Rose Dale, between Adams and Joseph Alley. That's the ordinance, what it basically says. There's two exhibits, BC1, BC2. BC1 is a proof of publication, but the ordinance was advertised in the Daily Local News on June 7, 2021. Email from our solicitor's office to the Chester County Law Library, the Daily Local News, providing the proposed amendment and posting it for public inspection. If that, there's any questions?
I have none. Any comments or questions for people attending the meeting?
Herb Schwabe, 133 West Bernard Street. I think it's an excellent idea to have two stop signs on Minor Street. I live one block from Minor and Darlington, and it is amazing how many people do. Some people think it is a stop sign street, other people don't. I've seen so many near accidents since I've been there since 97. Plus the speeding that allows people for three blocks is just, is amazing. So I greatly support this proposal and would encourage you to pass it. Thank you.
It took me 20 years to get used to those stop signs not being there. I'm going to have to go backwards. If there are no other comments or questions, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Braceley, I'd like to make a motion to accept the ordinance as presented.
Motion by Michael Stefano, seconded by Lisa Dorsey. Mr. Peron.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yeah.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Galey?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Okay, now we'll start the regular meeting. Begin with a pledge of allegiance with Ms. Dorsey. Thank you. Item number three, common suggestions petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda.
Daryl Cook, South Hornet Street. Why was the last change made to the tree ordinance last year?
What was your question again?
Why was the last change made to the tree ordinance last year?
Which change was that?
Street trees being not classified as heritage trees.
I thought we settled that last year. I mean, the answer to the question is, look at the minutes for the tapes of the meetings in online or Borough Hall. Find out the reasons why council voted the way.
Why was the street tree removed from the 300 block of South Hornet Street?
Mr. Hudson?
Kyle Hudson, 524 West Marshall Street. Just to follow up on that, have last year's meetings been added to the YouTube? I haven't checked it. So can Daryl check? So he is unable to do that. The meetings are not posted online. How would you do that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to go to the committees. The first is Administration Communication Technology Committee. Item number four, enter into a one-year contract with. Oh, I'm sorry.
Herb Schwabe, 133 West Bernard Street. I'm here to petition that the council terminate the committee to reestablish rail service to Westchester. Is that your discretion to do this at any time? And I believe that it has been going on far too long with too many studies, and we want, we continue to want to spend money on surveys, et cetera. To me, this is the committee that should be called the waiting for Godot. It's never going, I don't believe it's going to happen, at least definitely in my lifetime and many people's lifetimes. This is not inceptive future. I don't see how we, it can be justified, and they're going to be, if in some way they do come up with it, as far, all but other problems, parking, traffic, become the borough's Although, one person did suggest, at least online, that the committee be reformulated to look at our big issues. What's really happening around us, to get people in and out of the borough, how to park them in the borough, and encourage people to come into Westchester. I know, I have too many friends who just say, no, I'm not coming into Westchester. Too much traffic problems, too much parking problems, and too expensive. There's good money that our business people and our restaurants are not getting because of our issues. Railroads are not our issue. Maybe way back when it could have been a help to us. I don't see it as a priority that we should be considering at this point, let alone continuing to pursue, when we have so many other issues that the boroughs should be dealing with. I appreciate the committee members who have stood by this. I believe three of the committee members today are from the original committee formed, and I applaud them for being there and wanting to maintain, look into this idea. And I would hope if there was a new committee formed for the purpose of looking at current issues that revolve traffic and parking in the borough, that they would be willing to stay on with that. Now, maybe a sub-issue could be rail service, but I think we need to get over this idea that it's getting the railroad to Westchester is an essential for the survival of the borough. If I may note, I do have the ordinance here, and it does allow you to simply terminate the committee by council vote. So it's not like it has to be a big deal. You could put it on the agenda for tomorrow, and without any objections from, as such, and you could vote on it then. And please eliminate further spending.
Any questions, comments from members of council? Any comments, questions from members attending, people attending the meeting? It's not on the agenda, but I think we could bring that up at a committee meeting next month.
Now, which committee meeting would that be?
Act, probably, yeah. Administration Communication Technology.
Okay. That's why I brought it to this meeting, because I couldn't figure out what committee would be appropriate for it.
Mr. Braceley, the committee came up through Smart Growth. It was thought to be smart growth, because it had to do with growing the downtown in terms of the terminus area, and also a lot of opportunities if you have a railroad for the town, and it was thought to be a growth thing. And I think that's where it should go back, but anyway. What do you think, Borough Manager? Okay. Them's my thoughts. It's always gone through Smart Growth, even recently. Thank you.
Smart Growth sounds good to me, so we can put that on the Smart Growth Agenda for next month.
Question. Should I attend the Smart Growth and/or petition them, or should, can you ask the Smart Growth Committee to look into this?
Yeah, the way it'll probably be worded is, discuss termination or modification of the rail restoration committee, so you'd be able to, you know, make whatever comments you wanted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Now we'll do number four. Enter into a one-year contract with EcoVanta Electronic Waste at a cost of 30 cents per pound for non-covered electronic devices. Who's doing that? Mr. Williams?
Good evening. Will Williams, Sustainability Director. It's nice to see everyone in person. This is a one-year extension. That's the wrong one, Billy. The EcoVanta contract, it's a one-year extension for calendar year 2021, to a contract originally signed in 2019 for calendar year 2020. EcoVanta takes away all of our electronic waste that's dropped off by residents at Public Works. All of the covered devices under Act 108, Pennsylvania Act 108, we don't pay for. We only pay 30 cents a pound for non-covered items, which are cell phones, radios, DVD players, much smaller items, of which we don't collect many of. And when we do, we collect $5 flat fee to cover the cost of the 30 cents per pound.
Any questions from members of council? Any questions or comments from people attending the meeting? I think, I think this is a good thing. I would go for it. Any difficulty with putting it on the consent agenda? Okay, good. So item number four, we'll go on the consent agenda. Item number five, discuss establishing a policy to store Borough Council meeting minute sessions on social media.
I can take this one. More specifically, this is about putting things on YouTube. Things are already on YouTube right now, and I have found that extraordinarily helpful, preparing for meetings. I think it's just very easy to navigate, and it's all, each committee has its own playlist, and it's really well thought out and laid out, and it's brilliant. So I'm a big fan. Yeah, I know it says social media. We're going to talk about that in committee a little more next month. We're going to discuss, like, streaming options, and then what other platforms start to make sense. But this agenda item, to my knowledge, is just about YouTube.
Yeah, I know you had an email sent a link, and it came up, and I heard your voice. I said, oh, I like that. And I know we're also trying to work on coming up with a method of having hybrid meetings, so people can attend virtually but still participate.
Yeah, we're going to tackle that next month.
That's in the works. Thank you. Any questions or comments from other members of council, people attending the meeting? Oh, I'm sorry.
This, this is like one step of it, so we're going to do this, hopefully on consent, and then we're going to take a step further next month.
Any problem putting it on the consent agenda?
Putting our videos on YouTube.
Okay. So that's item number five, we'll put on the consent agenda. Item number six, authorize the Borough Manager to execute a 15-year power purchase agreement and an initial three-year energy supply contract with a supply cost equal to or less than $51,000?
$51 a megawatt hour.
Thank you.
Good evening again. So about three weeks before lockdown last year, we received our Energy Transition Plan published by Cadmus. This is a joint project between the borough and five surrounding townships. Together, we represent the Westchester Area Council of Governments. In that study, one of the most impactful findings and, you know, action items for us was to buy clean energy from a new local clean energy resource. And that's what I'm pitching tonight. It's an opportunity for us to lead the way in the community, and to our knowledge, no group of small governments have ever banded together and done this together. Philadelphia did it recently. SEPTA done it, has done it recently, but no small governments have done it. Okay, so just to recap, how we buy energy today, we have, we sign two- to three-year supply contracts. That's a fixed price, and that transaction happens on our PICO bill. The downside to this is our energy is not clean. We don't know where it's coming from, and it's coming from an existing power plant. And I'm just, the energy supply right now, that's one component of our PICO bill, and it's roughly speaking, depending on that type of account, it's about 50% of the PICO So when we sign those two- to three-year energy supply contracts, we're not only buying energy, but we're buying these, about a dozen other line items, that aren't really related to the cost of our energy, but they're included on that energy supply contract. So a power purchase agreement is a similar mechanism. It's actually an underlying agreement. We're still going to sign two- to three-year energy supply contracts. Still going to have a fixed price. It's the same transaction on our PICO bill, where we're going to buy energy from a clean energy resource. We're going to know where it is, and it's going to be a new project offsetting fossil fuels on the grid. So the ask tonight is authorize Borough Manager to execute a 15-year power purchase agreement and initial three-year energy supply contract commencing in 2024, which is how much time it would take if we could sign an agreement this year, actually build a new, it's almost certainly going to be a solar farm, in conjunction with our other participating municipalities, at a price of $51 a megawatt hour. This was a recommendation of the Act Committee last week. $51 a megawatt hour is what we paid last year. Right now, we're in a lower price contract, and will be for the next two years. But in 2024, we could anticipate paying at least $48 a megawatt hour. So this is roughly $15,000, $16,000 premium over where we would probably be. And again, it's what we paid last year, so nothing outlandish. A little bit about the process, the reason typically this, every time we have a contract that goes back to Borough Council, the reason we can't do that is because once you have, once we have all the approvals from the municipalities, we go to an aggregator. And aggregator, in this case, is almost certainly going to be Constellation Energy. They're the aggregator we're all currently working with, with energy procurement. Once we have our approvals, they start shopping a project for us. Once they find one, and we're ready to sign on, we have 24 hours to get the developer, the aggregator, and all six municipalities to sign the same contract. So next steps, hopefully, we'll get the approval we need here, and then I'm going to do the same presentation at the other municipalities. The nice thing about Borough is because we're paying less for energy than everyone else, whatever price we set is, as the ceiling for a potential contract, that's going to be the price we get to run with. Between getting those approvals and actually signing a contract, we're going to have one more step, which is we're going to bring in an energy consultant who does this professionally for a living, make sure that we totally understand the ins and outs of the power purchase agreement, Once we'll, it's, we need a letter of commitment, which the Borough Manager can sign, and provide that to the aggregator, so they can start shopping on our behalf. What we've said is, if we don't end up signing a deal in calendar year 2021, we'll come back to the new council next January or February and review this approval and try to get it done next year.
Just a little bit of background, this has been discussed by the Westchester Area Council of Governments, which is a group from all surrounding municipalities. And if I remember correctly, I think Thornbury is the only one that is not participating in this? Okay. But everyone else pretty much is, okay. And I think this is a really good thing, and I know you've worked very hard on it. So I don't have any issues with this. Any questions, comments from members of council? Any questions, comments from people attending the meeting? Consent agenda? Item number six will be put on the consent agenda. Item number seven, approve the resolution for Westchester Downtown Foundation Annual Up on the Roof Event at the Chestnut Street Garage on September 25, 2021. This is a get-together that we usually have in June, up on the roof of the Chestnut Street Garage, always very enjoyable. One year, Mr. Scott and I closed the place, and I'll be able to get one more before my term is up. But like I said, we've been doing this for a good number of years. Are there any questions or comments from, yeah, Mr. Flynn?
Just to bring some light to this, this event. Normally, it is a dinner event, cocktail event, and dancing event up on the roof. If I'm going to represent this wrong, Mr. O'Brien, make sure I take care of it. What is planned this year because of COVID and because of such short notice? They're out, we are out trying to get sponsors to sponsor as they have, and they're planning on having cocktails on the roof and hors d'oeuvres on the roof. And then after that, two hours, yeah, right around two hours, everyone will be dismissed to go into the borough to have dinner in the downtown because of COVID. They want to keep it alive and make sure everybody attended. The hors d'oeuvres will be provided by Lemoncello, and I'm not so sure about the music. That I don't remember. But the cocktails and hors d'oeuvres will be on the roof, so.
Any comments, suggestions from people attending the meeting? Members of council? Consent agenda? Okay. Item number seven, go on the consent agenda. We'll go to Public Works. Item number eight, enter into a contract with O'Donnell and Nakarado for structural design repairs to the bicentennial garage in the amount $45,600. Do you want to fill us in a little bit on that?
This is basically similar to the Chestnut Street Garage. We're going to be doing repairs to the garage, bicentennial garage, and we're, received a proposal from O'Donnell Nakarado to do an evaluation and assessment, repair plans and specifications, and handle the bidding process. And the third phase is the construction oversight and administration.
Any questions from members of council?
Yes, that's correct. They did the Chestnut Street Garage also, and they also represented us in the lawsuit on the Chestnut Street Garage. It's, the price is similar to the one at Chestnut Street Garage. We just wanted to go, we know that O'Donnell Nakarado is highly respected in parking garage repairs, so we just went with them. And we're, we did so partly because we want to get it done this year, so if we had to go through the bid process, we ran the risk of not getting it done at all in 2021.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from anybody?
I have one more question.
Sure.
Mr. Braceley. Is it, and this is for Mr. Peron, I think, is it common practice to get, you know, more than one bid? Two or three?
Yeah, we typically do that. This is a professional services contract, and we have a, we have a professional relationship with this organization already. They're probably the best in the business. And I, you know, one of my personal pet peeves of my 35-year career has been, we tore down a garage because it wasn't maintained properly, and we weren't getting proper structural engineering reports over the years. And I'd like to make sure that we don't repeat that again with the garages we have. I'm not saying this is the lowest price we could get. I'm sure we could get a lower price, but this is one of those things, you know, you get what you pay for. I would recommend we stick with this company. They're excellent.
Okay. Consent agenda? Okay. Item number eight, we'll go on the consent agenda. Item number nine, enter into a contract with Structured Solutions LLC for sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation in the amount of $54,460. This is kind of a housekeeping issue. We've done this in the past to fix manholes and replace some of them, replace some of the, I guess, brickwork done down there?
Yeah, this is a, this was part of a grant back in, I believe it was 2019, that we received for $278,000. that we received for $278,000. Phase one, which was already, has already been completed, was for about $108,000. And that was for lining sanitary sewer pipes. Phase two is to line sanitary sewer manholes. And that bid came in at the $54,460.
Any questions, comments from, any questions, comments from people attending the meeting? Consent agenda? Okay. Item number nine will go on the consent agenda. Item number 10, enter into a contract with M&amp;A Coatings for stairway handrail repainting at the Chestnut Street and bicentennial parking garages in the amount of $94,400. This is a semi-big project, I think.
Yes, this was actually, the painting of the handrails in the Chestnut Street Garage was part of the original bid for the, the repairs in the Chestnut Street Garage. But the, I had it down as an alternate in order to maintain the budget. And what happened was we got a wide range of prices for the painting of the handrail there. And it ranged from, I think it was $45,000 to $180,000 just for the Chestnut Street Garage. So I thought it would be best, I didn't award, I didn't want to award the painting for the Chestnut Street Garage. And I took that off and decided to bid both garages just strictly for the painting rather than structural modifications. And the bid for both garages came in at $94,400. M&amp;A coatings were the only one to bid on that project.
Can I have a question? This, I don't know, I'm totally ignorant to this. That seems like a, is there a special, something special I'm missing about painting railings? Is it like a special, something, there has to be something I'm missing.
The paint doctor, I make house calls for sick walls. The, if you've been in the two stair towers at the parking garage, you, you'll see that we, because of all the leaks that we've had in those garages, you'll see deteriorating metal and also rust everywhere. The way that the specification was written was that they're going to, both stair, at all, four, four stair towers, what they're going to do is they're going to blast clean. All right. They used to use the word sandblast, but they use different kinds of mediums now. Okay? So they're going to make all the metal look like brand new. It's going to be white metal blast. And then what they're going to do is then they gotta remove all the debris. And then what they have to do is they're going to put three coats of epoxy on all the handrails. The biggest part of the, the project is the blast cleaning because they have to make sure there's zero contaminants left on anywhere. Because if not, it'd be just like going to the dentist and having a small decay in your tooth. And you didn't get it all out, it'll just grow. So they have, they'll have an inspector on site to make sure that each phase is done with white metal blast.
Thank you.
Well, what, what'll happen is the stair towers, whatever stair tower they're working in, will be inaccessible. Okay, the stair towers are self-contained by cinder block walls and one glass window. They'll let in light on each, each level. But that, when they're in the stair tower, no one will be able to be in that stair tower. There'll still be other stair towers that people can use, and the elevator will be working. No. No, no. The, they'll, what they'll do is for the safety of the individuals inside the stair tower, either they'll be wearing air packs or they will be using a negative and positive air. A bigger fan at the top and a big fan at the bottom. And open the doors or take the doors off the hinges or whatever it will be. But it's a self-contained, it's almost like painting the inside of a straw. You know, it's, it's self-contained. All right?
Thank you.
Hi. So just because we were just talking about how we're going to repair one of the garages, this, the painting will be done after the repairs, correct? I mean, I just don't understand why we would like repair it and then paint it at the same time and before we know that the repairs are fine. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it could, it could mess up the paint, and it's a lot of money. So I'm just wondering about the order of operations.
Thanks for asking, Kyle. I always enjoy talking with you. The, the repairs that are being done in the Chestnut Street Garage and the repairs in the bicentennial garage are mainly out in the concrete areas where the caulk has pulled away from itself and allowing the building to leak. Inside the stair towers, you have concrete treads and risers, metal toes, toe edges, and you have metal handrails. And that will not be even close to anywhere where they're doing any repairs. There's no real repairs in the stair towers unless when they're saying, when they're grip blasting, they blow some of the metal apart because it's deteriorated beyond our maintenance that we kept there. And what they'll do is they'll just move along and come back and repair the, the legs or a handrail or something like that. But it has nothing to do with the structural integrity of the building. This is, I hate to use the word cosmetic, but that's basically what it is. It's, it's a cathodic coating that we're going to be putting in there so the handrails don't fall off the concrete steps. Plus, we need them, so.
Anything else from anyone? Consent agenda? Okay. Item number 10 will go on the consent agenda. Item number 11, enter into a contract with Glasgow Incorporated to purchase asphalt materials and crushstone in 2021 in accordance with the attached list of unit prices by the ton. Again, this is something we do every year. The list is right there. Is there any needed comment on this?
This is actually a bid that's put out annually. I put the, I put it out as one proposal, but for two separate items. One of being the asphalt material and the other being the crushed stone. The only bidder was Glasgow Incorporated. And you, you see the tonnage, I have quantities there. But the intent was, that was just for estimates to let them know roughly what we purchase annually so that we, you know, get an accurate price. And basically, we're just approving the, tonight, the unit costs and to use Glasgow.
Okay, thank you, sir. Can you come on up? And also, also give us your name and your street address. Thank you.
About six years. So I just looking at this, I said, you know, we, we read every day or hear every day about inflationary costs with construction products, lumber and everything else you can't get. Has that gone up considerably versus last year's bid? I know we only apparently had one, one bid. Has, has, have we seen a price escalation?
There was a price increase. It wasn't, I want to say it was maybe 3%, 4%? A dollar or two per ton on each one.
Does that answer your question, sir? Good, thank you. Any other comments, questions from assembled masses? Okay. So we'll put that on the consent agenda. Item number 12, enter into a contract with Diraco Brothers for emergency services for 2021, 2022 in accordance with the attached list of our lead rates. And this is something we've done the last few years, too.
Yes, we put out to bid for emergency services, which is for things that Public Works, or if it's a nighttime emergency, if we have a sewer break and sinkhole in a road that we need a contractor to come in to fix immediately. So I, I reached out and I put up to bid several, I think it was 13 different line items for hourly rates, including laborers, operators, foremans, that type of thing, and different pieces of equipment. We only had one bidder, and that was Diraco Brothers, Inc.
Okay. Any questions, comments from members of council, attendees here? Ms. Dee Baptiste, come on up. Seems to be this year.
It was put on bed, I'm sorry. It was put on Penn bid, and we had probably six to eight contractors that actually opened the bid and considered bidding on it. But for some reason, we only received the one bid. It could have been, the bids were due the day after Memorial Day, so that might have had an effect on it. But it was open to the public.
Does that answer your question? All right, okay. Kyle, come on up.
To follow up on Ms. Dee Baptiste's question, who's responsible for putting out those bids? I mean, that sounds like a, a problem. I mean, because, I mean, every single thing that's come up tonight has been one bid. And, you know, having a deadline be the day after Memorial Day probably isn't the wisest decision. So I'm just curious, who's responsible for putting these bids out and deciding the deadlines?
I was the one who put him up the bid. Basically, the bids are scheduled, the deadlines are scheduled to meet the, this meeting and last week's committee meeting. So that's how, how they're decided.
Does that answer? Okay, thanks. Mr. Flynn?
Kyle, to help me out, just to understand a little bit better, what we, what the Borough does is we actually use a statewide bidding system. It's called Penn bid. So what that happens is it's almost like a sales catalog that goes out, I guess, weekly of all the work that has to be done in the state of Pennsylvania. And anybody that's interested in bidding on that type of work, if that's your, your job, you're able to actually bid through Penn bid. And what happens is when the deadline closes, we get, we get the results. Sometimes there's 10 or 15, sometimes it's three or four, sometimes it's just one person that's interested in bidding on it. But it's bid statewide using the, it's the Commonwealth, right? Penn bid? Nationwide, okay. So it's, it's, it's out there. Everybody knows to do government work looks on Penn bid or whatever, whatever else bidding unit they use. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you? Yeah, you got to come up. We can't hear you. Thanks.
So when you're talking about the bids, are you talking about all of these bids that have come up thus far or put out nationwide? Or were you being specific to the last one?
All, all the bids, the, the Borough puts out on Penn bid. And I, I thought, to my ignorance, I thought it was just for Pennsylvania. But Mr. Valente said that it goes out nationwide. And so it's, it's, it's a forecast out in the open air market for people who want, want the bid on work.
My only other question is, what's the normal turnaround time for those bids? So you put it out, is it 30 days, 10 days?
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Consent? Okay, so we'll put that on the consent agenda. Number 13, approve the use, I'm sure I didn't miss anything. Approve the use of Adios Organic Weed Killer in Westchester Borough Parks. This is a weed killer, oh, there we go. That is environmentally friendly. It's basically salt. What I understand, it doesn't kill anything. So it doesn't kill insects and other critters unlike, say, Roundup, which is a potential carcinogen. So this is reasonably safe. It would be used primarily with hand sprayers, if I remember correctly. So it isn't those that would be spraying it all over the Borough. Sir, come on up.
Sure. Okay, the, the recommendation for this product came from our arborist, Mike Dunn, where he keeps the tree wells around, around the Borough clean. Currently, what we're using is community service people, thanks to Judge Vito. She's been very kind to give us plenty of help this summer. You'll see a little red wagon walking around downtown and a little broom. But that's Judge Vito's action right there. The, the product, and I, I agree with you. When you say something organic, you just figure, oh, boy. It's, it costs three times as much, and it just may work. Okay, this came from a recommendation from our arborist. And we're pretty excited to be able to try, try to see if it actually works. The first test is going to be a green field, the baseball field down on Franklin Avenue. Because I can't get enough community service people pick the weeds out of there because Dale and I did it last year, and we got too many sunburns. And, but it's, that's, we're going to try to see if it works.
Any other questions or comments, members of council or people attending the meeting? Consent agenda? All right, we'll put that item on the consent agenda. Item number 14, schedule a date for a public hearing and authorize a solicitor preparer and ordinance amendment to Chapter 77 for recommended changes to residential parking guest pass regulations. We're going to be scheduling a date. Do we have date that, we have other hearings? No, okay. What's that? Yeah. We're just going to put this on the discussion agenda anyway for tomorrow. While you're here, is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue?
Can I put a point of order? So if this is something that shouldn't have come from committee, should we just not discuss it and push it back to committee? If that, if it wasn't supposed to, they're saying that they weren't, didn't actually approve it at the committee level. So was it approved or not? Because if it wasn't, then we shouldn't be, we should just push it back, I feel like. We're still open for discussion. It was news to me tonight that it wasn't approved. I assumed that it was, and that's why. why I ever had it here to talk about.
Yeah, that's, my notes have two to one.
Well, we can go back and listen to the recording for confirmation. Okay.
Just to follow up with that, the committee did not want to rubber stamp it, because we wanted it to come to committee, so we could, to, to the work session, so we could actually hash through it, because there's so many moving parts in it, that some of them make sense, some of them have a lot of questions attached to it, so we just forward it to our, our work session right here.
That makes, that makes sense, thanks.
Okay, we'll take some comments. Ms. LeBolle.
Okay, so, so I have to keep pushing the button the whole time? What? No, that's okay, thank you. Anyway, it's, it's a joy to be here, guys, but this is, I've never been on this side of the, of the dais, so I, I just wanted to say, it's really great to see all your faces in person again, thank you for being here. I, I guess, the best way to handle this is to say that I am speaking for myself, Ann Carroll, and another resident named Linda Glom, who both, you, you've already seen Ann's ideas, but Linda's you have not yet seen. So I hope that you'll bear with me just for a minute, because I'm actually speaking for three people. And I also would like to point out that I made a mistake in an email that I sent, saying that, that students who, four students in a, in an apartment can get eight guest passes, and that's not correct. But four units in, in a building, each one with two guest passes can, can get eight. So, that being said, I, I think everyone's aware of the fact that the main objections to this proposal are that one guest pass per dwelling unit is not sufficient for most people in, who live in residential permit parking areas, and that $100 for a lost guest pass is absolutely absurd for those of us who actually live in the borough permanently, or shall we say, non-student residents. And also, I have questions about no limit on the use of guest passes, or removing the five-day limit on the use of a guest pass, because I'm not clear on what the result of that will be, does that mean it's only good for one day, or does that mean that it's, it's unlimited use? So, that being said, I'd just like to address a couple of the things directly, oops, lost my phone, just hang here. Rats. And address Mr. Metric's proposal, oh, well, because, you know, I, I really do understand what you're trying to do, Mr. Metric. I, I understand that, and I have to, I have to mention that this is an issue that has, that was being dealt with on the parking committee when I was on council the first time, in the year 2000, and even before that, and then probably four councils since then have tried to, tried to resolve this problem, which is not so much what normal, not, I won't say, non-student residents do with permits and guest passes, but what students do to abuse mainly the guest pass process. So I get that that needs to be addressed, but finding a, a way to address it that doesn't affect non-student residents, Mr. Flynn objected by calling non-student residents permanent residents, so, is the issue. And so, that being said, Mr. Metric says that we are overselling permits by 250%, but the fact of the matter is, if, if we sold 51 something, 38 permits and guest passes, 2,800, 2,866 of those were actual permits, and the 2,300 were guest passes, so we only oversold permits by about 34%. I think that's the number that I came up with. And, and we have to remember that guest passes, all the guest passes aren't on the street every day, only a certain percentage of guest passes are going to be on the street. So that being said, the other one, the other issue that I would like council to consider is that the master parking plan said there are about 2,000 residential permit parking spaces in the borough, but I can't find out where they got that number. So it was just like, sort of, was it a guesstimate, their best guess, off the top of their heads? Do you know, Mr. Perrin? Yeah, well, in 2010, the inimitable Jim Jones did an actual physical inventory, and he actually walked every block and measured it, and he, and he figured out that we actually have about 3,000 permit parking spaces. So somewhere in between, I think, is probably the reality. That being said, there prob, there may be more permit parking spaces than the master parking plan claims. Okay. So that being said, I just want to quickly make a couple of Ann Carroll's points, which is spending $5,000 a year to print 2,100 hang tags, she figures that's actually results in $7,600 in revenue, at $6 a hang tag, a, a guest pass. Also, the whole issue of, oh, excuse me, let me take my paper. Okay, that being said, limit the number of annual guest passes to one per resident, one, one per, one per residence, or one per dwelling unit, let's say. You know, does that mean I'm not allowed to have more than one guest at any one time? On a, on a night that, or if, as I have had happen, my teenage grandson gives my, gives one of the, my parking passes to a friend, and the friend drives off and isn't going to come back for a couple of months, then I have to pay $100 to replace it? I don't think so, folks. And so I would hope the council would understand that that's not viable for, I understand the purpose of that, which is to try to prevent fraud, but that leads me to the question of, when a guest pass is, is lost by a student, and they, and they then apply to get a new guest pass, then I assume that that first guest pass is, is canceled out, right? Because that's what happened when, when I lost, I actually did lose a guest pass, and, and Tina canceled it out and then sent me a new one. So my question is, do we have a way to, for our parking enforcement officers to check whether or not a guest pass is valid?
Not a, not a practical solution, no.
Okay, so.
Since they switched to a hang tag system.
Right, so that, that's a problem, and that allows for this, for the fraud that you're concerned with. But, so, that being said, let's see, the, of course, the guest pass, $100 to replace the guest pass is, is, in Ann's view, is purely punitive, and in, in, evidently in the committee, whoever was speaking suggested that it could be made policy but ignored, but Ann's point is, it would be in the code, and selective enforcement is illegal, so you can't just ignore it if it's in the code. And her other issue was, I think that's about it, that's all the ones I wanted to talk about. Okay, that being said, the, in the, in the master parking study, the executive summary says, "The borough should make an effort to work with Westchester University to develop strategies to help reduce student parking demand in residential areas," okay? "And to use WC Park, WCU, Westchester University Parking Resources to support evening student parking demand." Okay. Now, I know that President Fiorentino, at least the last time I talked to him, which was actually a couple of years ago, was very interested in trying to help us resolve this parking issue. So one thing that we might want to do just right off the top, before we take any steps to try to modify the guest pass problem, is, well, first of all, make it possible to read invalid guest passes, but second of all, talk to the university, because Linda Glom had some great ideas. She said, "Could the college offer a certain amount of space per semester to off-campus students?" They already do. And, but, but give them perks, incentives, to use the university parking rather than on-street parking. And, and what they would have to do, of course, is probably park in, in South Campus, but then, and they already do, and shuttle back and forth, but just make that more appealing, give them perks. And her, some of her perks were, suggestions were, a discount for, of a, a discount if the parking, oh, a discount on the parking pass for the semester if the pass is paid in full. I don't know, that's, discounted, or discounted or free tickets to college events, a discount card for the college bookstore, and of course, bikes for students to borrow to use home, ride-share cars, coupons or discounts to, to use Uber, Lyft, or other car ride services, things like that, but talk to, talk to President Fiorentino, because he, he's lived in the borough forever, he used to teach at the university, and he's a good guy. So I would suggest starting there to try to get to the root of the problem, which is, there's too many students in town. So, that being said, next on is, oh, and other suggestions are, in order to reduce the number of residential permits, the master parking plan suggests that we offer two residential permits to residents, only two residential permits to residences with, that have off-street parking. So like my block, and all the other people who are raising their hands, we do not have off-street parking. So for us to have only one guest pass would just be ridiculous. On the other hand, two people who do have off-street parking maybe only get two permits, and therefore, they, they might still get two guest passes, but they only get two permits. And plus, and the other idea that I thought was pretty good was to place a premium on every additional permit. So if the first permit is $20, then the next permit is $35, and the third permit, because I have people in my block who have like three or four cars, and, and that kind of messes up the parking, just right there, for one residence. So if, but if they had to pay more for each permit, maybe they would rethink how they were, how many permits they were requiring. Okay. The other, however, I had some questions that I was hoping Mr., I was hoping Bill Mann could answer, but I, I think he passed it along to Mr. Metric, about how we track, how, do we track how many permits and guest passes have been issued to one dwelling unit? We do. So we know, and, and, and so when, if we get a request for a fifth permit in a dwelling unit, do we not allow it? We do? If we, if we get a request for, for a fifth parking permit in a dwelling unit, no, no, this is permits, not, not, not guest passes. Yeah, we don't want to confuse those two things. The most that we've issued, why do we issue five to one dwelling unit? Because they can have that many cars, is what you're saying. Unlimited number of residential permits at one address. Okay. So, okay, which raises the second question, do we have a way in the system to flag student homes? I know, they have a list of them, but, but when somebody's applying for, for a residential parking permit, do we have a way to determine if that's a student home or not? Do we have a way to flag it if it is a student home? Not easily? Yeah, that's, because, as I was saying to Mr., yeah. Right, but what happens if people, if people apply online and they don't actually show up? Because a lot of people are applying online to get permits, right? So is there a way to flag? Yeah, okay, yeah, so is there a way to do that, I guess is my question, because well, I don't, I don't mind raising the price of the permits, that's not the issue.
That's a good question.
We can't do it easily, but if it were possible, as, as I was saying to Mr. Flynn, we can have two different systems for students versus non-students, because, yes, okay, so just be aware of that, that we don't have, anything that you do to try to prevent student abuse does not have to apply to non-students, provided we can flag student homes, right? Yeah, I told you I'm speaking for three people, so I get, I get three times. I'm speaking for three people, that's the reason I said that to begin with. Okay. So, so just, and, and then the third one, if a guest pass is lost, oh, we already discussed that, can, can the system recognize a pass that's been canceled? And the answer is no, and maybe we, maybe we need to do some modifications to the parking system, to the parking permit system, so that we can at least identify canceled guest passes, and also that we can flag student homes, so that we can apply, perhaps, if this council so wishes, a different set of rules to student homes than apply to non-student homes, non-student dwelling units, I should say. Okay, that's my, that's it? That's all I, that's all I have to add, but, you know, my, my compatriots here from the neighborhood may also have something to add, so I'll step down, and.
Wait a minute. Mr. Allen?
I just wanted to mention that I raised a lot of those same concerns last week about, I think the biggest thing we could hope to figure out is some sort of method to verify which guest passes are valid and not valid, because then we solve that $100 thing, we solve the student thing, we don't have to go to two different databases, which kind of makes me a little bit uncomfortable. So that's something that I think is a really, really ideal solution, if we can figure that out, and, you know, for that reason, I'm kind of hoping that we wait on this a little while, just to go down that lane and see what we can do in terms of like guest pass verification.
Yeah, I, I would really recommend, the reason I wanted to bring up all these questions is so that council understands that this isn't as a done deal, as much of a done deal as I'm afraid Mr. Metric's proposal makes it seem, because there are issues here that are not considered. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time.
I get it, that $100 is pretty high. Is there any consensus of what might be an appropriate number among your trio of?
Well, I think when I lost my guest pass, I paid $14 to have it replaced.
So $14 is what you.
Seemed reasonable, but, but if, if you have a household where they keep losing guest passes, then maybe each one after that costs more, you know, that, that might be a way to prevent extensive fraud, but for, you know, an honest person who just really lost the guest pass, because somebody drove off with it, it happened to be a friend of my grandson's, and never came back, then it, $14 seemed reasonable to me, you know, so.
I have another question. You talk about the number of student homes and where they are and so forth and so on, I thought we had a master list of student homes.
We do, but it's not, it's not integrated into this parking permit system.
Okay, but anybody who's within the parking permit system can look at the list and find out if a student home.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, it's just a list that has all their addresses on it.
Yeah, but if, if they have the list, and they're, and it, and it's like a human being with, with a list of, of student homes. But the thing is, how do you know, how do you know which ones to lose up, to look up? You know, they have to be flagged, like a flag would have to go up if it's a student home, for, rather than have every, every permit, having, our parking folks have to look at every permit and check the address, you know, and see if it's a student home, check it against the student home list. I mean, that would be very time-consuming. No, no, at the, at the permit issuance end, at the sales end. Because they could have the list, but then, you know, they'd be, then they have to go say, oh, okay, you live at 501 South Walnut Street, is that a student home? You know, so. Well, when you're doing a lot of these things, I think it could get to be a big deal. And it might not be accurate. And also, there are a lot of people who apply online, so we'd lose a lot of them, anyway. So does that, does this make sense to anybody? I mean, this is, okay, because I just would hate to see us rush into something where there are a lot of moving parts that aren't being considered, that's all. I will step down now, thank you.
Thank you. That's good.
And Rich Keenan, just a, just a couple of other points. I guess I want to understand is, we're in a process here, this is not something that's going to be decided in the very near term, based on what I've read, in terms of, you know, permit costs, et cetera. There are additional steps where you can gain input from residents? That, is that the case?
Sure, we could public, strike that, the parking committee meetings, you can contact your elected reps, you can call here? Sure.
Two points, and thank you. I think just by reading something I have here, I can understand now why parking is so difficult. We oversell, we oversell the number of permits we have. And if I'm looking at it, I think the reason is, because there's no barrier. The cost is minimal. And so I really think a solution might be, and I think Diane touched on this, is to say, hey, if you're a resident, I know I'm willing, I'm not speaking for everyone, I spend $100 a month to park one of my cars in the Chestnut Street garage, and I still get tickets, because when I get home at a certain hour, I'm in Area L, there are no spots. A lot of people are visiting the restaurants, and they just park there, and they're willing to risk a $25 ticket. We ought to up that ticket, make it, make it hurt, and they'll stop doing it. But I think one of the considerations for the committee is to say, hey, let's, let's look at the cost of a permit, so that I'd be less inclined to get four of them, or five of them, or six of them for my dwelling, if it's going to cost me 50 bucks or 100 bucks apiece. Because what happens now, at least for me, is I get home at 4 o'clock, and all the spots are taken in Area L, I park somewhere else, I get a ticket. Or I have to go to the lot, as I did on Saturday night, when I got home at 6 or 7 o'clock at night, and it cost me 10 bucks to park. I'm a resident. I shouldn't have to park, pay to park at a meter when I, when I get home on an evening. So I think just some other things that we need to consider, maybe, maybe raise the cost a little bit, so that it's not so easy just to go in and walk in and get a couple of permits. And there's, you know, there's very little skin in the game. And how about this? 24/7 permit parking. Saturdays and Sundays are very problematic for the area I live in, when folks can park outside, outsiders, and I call them outsiders, I'm happy they're coming here, all right, they're spending money, but if you come to Area L on a Saturday afternoon, or Saturday evening, Sunday, I can't find a spot. Because our folks are coming into town, they're using our shops, they're spending money, which I'm all in favor of, but the residents now have a problem trying to park their vehicles. I think a simple solution would be 24/7 for those permitted areas. And it would save us a lot of aggravation, and certainly would save me some, some tickets. Thank you.
Thank you. All the way in the back, is that Suzanne? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, Suzanne Adams, 124 East Union Street. Thanks to the Parking Committee and Borough Council for taking on this very important aspect of quality of life in the borough. I also want to say that I agree with many, if not all, the points that Diane brought up. I'm not here to talk about all of the things that could be done within the recommendations of the parking study, but I did want to comment and question, actually, the two points, two of the points in, in the, on the agenda here. First of all, I want to share my own experience about getting guest passes. So we, we live on a block where there is very few homes with off-street parking, and it's hell to find parking on our block. But when I went to get a guest pass, so my husband has a car and I have a car, and when I went to get a guest pass, after he had already got his parking permit and purchased two guest passes, I was offered two more guest passes. So in my mind, the way things were working is that each parking permit was allowed to buy two guest passes. Maybe that was a mistake on the part of the person who took care of me, but as I read what you're saying in this proposal, is that the number of guest passes will be limited by residents, not by parking permit holder. And I just think you need to get clarity about what's been done in the past and how things are working. Because I agree that limiting the number of guest passes on a per-residence, meaning per-household basis, is a good idea, but I'm not sure that our system is working that way now, just based on my own personal experience. The other point I want to emphasize is that the $100 thing is nutty. I mean, it's just, nobody should be punished if their guest pass is accidentally lost. And the true solution here is to, you know, eliminate, to cancel out, to make invalid the lost pass, so that if there's a cost to replacing passes, absolutely, but it's, that cost isn't $100, and that's just not fair to residents. And for my part, I think that student homes should not be given guest passes, period, the end. Thank you.
Wait a minute. Let's get someone that hasn't spoken yet. Just ladies and gentlemen, for what it's worth, we still have a good deal more that we have to get finished for this evening, just to keep that in the back of your head. Jim, come on up.
Counsel?
Yeah.
I'm going to make a suggestion that either, if you have an intention of doing anything tonight or tomorrow night, we're sending it back to committee, save a lot of folks a lot of time here to see.
That's what I was going to do, because I think this needs, it's not ready for primetime, but that's what I was going to suggest. But I just wanted to hear some of what people had to say.
If you're, if I could input my two cents, I think, I think this is not ready for council. I think this needs to go back to committee, and we need to hash out a lot of ideas. So I think we're, we're going to talk a lot tonight, but I think in the end result, it's going to go back to committee, so.
Okay. Have you say?
Jim Sargent, 321 South Walnut. I'm going to agree with General Perone, but I have a couple of points I just want to make, I don't want to repeat what anybody else has said. I have been a resident of South Walnut Street now for 21 years, resident of Chester County for many more years than that. But in every one of those years, we have, we have cars that are parked in a garage behind our house, but we have complied with the borough regulations and purchased permits for our cars. We also have gotten two guest passes. My view of guest passes apparently is different than a lot of people in the borough. Occasionally, we have guests. We actually have had maybe half a dozen guests visit us during the course of the year when we've used the guest passes. They're primarily used when people come to do service calls in our house. So we might use our guest passes a total of a dozen times in a year. That's kind of comports with my view of what a guest pass is. Guest pass is not a permanent parking permit, but the, the, the students are using them as permanent parking permits. And, and the problem is, not only that they're using these guest passes as permanent parking permits, but they clog our parking areas. And I don't have to use the parking areas myself, I'm very sympathetic to those who do have to park on the street. That's one problem for permanent residents. What I've noted in our block is it's usually the cars that have the hang tags, or maybe not, who park on our street. The students who own them come from way south on South Walnut Street, because I've, I've seen them come up, and I've said, oh, where do you come from? Oh, I'm in the 400 or the 500 block. And they often leave their cars there when the street cleaning comes by. So there are a whole bunch of compliance issues. I think there should be two classes of, of passes. There should be passes that apply to the non-permanent residents, classes that apply to the permanent residents. And obviously, you can't have a situation where one building has multiples of what we have as a single-family owner. It's a revelation to me that there isn't an ability to track these passes electronically, because we did shift from a system where we, as residents, had to have stickers on our cars, to a system where the parking people, and there's a very good crew who go out there, but they can read the license plates of the cars who have permanent passes. I don't understand why they can't read the hang tags and figure out whether those hang tags, you know, and monitor them. How many times are they on a block during the academic year? Maybe there should be a limitation on how often you can use those hang tags. So I do hope that, that there's some real thought to this. And I will point out, it's probably against my interests, but I will say that the Lam McElane parking lot, behind our firm at 24 East Market Street, et cetera, is wide open during the weekends. People park there all the time, we haven't enforced that. We have about 46 parking places that people use with impunity for free. So that's been a contribution, I suppose, to the, the blocks which are closer to town. Maybe you should park there. No one's going to tell you. So thank you very much for your attention.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to conclude this now, because we're going to send it back to committee. So people that did not get an opportunity to speak tonight, you'll be able to speak then. It seems as though there's a lot we need to work out, your input will be good to have. The next Parking Committee meeting is the, it's usually held the second Wednesday of the month, I forget what time, but that's on the borough website. So we're going to move on, and we're going to go to item number seven, or strike that, item number sixteen, fifteen. Schedule a date for a public hearing and authorize a solicitor to prepare an ordinance amendment to Chapter 104-45 to install a handicap parking space at 333 East Minor Street. This is, again, a, pretty much a housekeeping issue. Sent, we have to come up with a date.
You want to put it next month, it could be 20th to the 21st of July, that's Tuesday, Wednesday. Yeah, those are the two work sessions on the 20th and voting's on the 21st. July 20th?
July 20th.
Is that a quick one? It's a quick one, 7:00 PM. I guess.
Okay, good. Item number 16, enter into a contract with Play Power LT Farmington for the purchase and installation of playground equipment at Marshall Square Park at a cost of $45,052.40.
Yeah, this is, I'll get it, Barb, it's all budgeted, it says, state purchasing contractor we're buying all the equipment from, we're overbid by $52.40, so we're looking for donations to make up.
I'll do the 40 cents. Okay, any comments from members of council? Any comments or questions? Cock, one up.
Just for the record, how many bids were there for this?
Okay, so that will go on the Cessna agenda. Item number 17, discuss zoning hearing application. Item A concerns 28 East Virginia Avenue, Karen and Bruce Cavan. They seek a variance from Section 112-88.J to allow for an accessory structure that is not 10 feet further back from the rearmost portion of the principal building. And this is whether we want to send a solicitor or not, correct? I don't see where we need to.
The committee, the committee said not to recommend it, so.
Yeah.
I don't want this even.
Yeah, okay. Need to vote on that? No, okay. Okay, item number 18, approve the May 2021 Harb certificate of appropriateness. The first one, item A, 322 North High Street. This has to do with putting up a sign, which was approved without conditions, or was approved as presented, correct?
The sign was approved as presented.
Okay, so there are no issues with that. Any comments from anyone? Item B, 329 North High Street, this is a little more complicated. Can you all sit a little bit on that?
Absolutely. 329 North High Street, the proposal was to install new cedar fencing around a portion of the property, and also install a second-floor addition over an existing one-story portion at the rear of the house. Harb did, they did approve it with conditions, and those conditions were listed on the application for the COA. Bill, if you can go to the actual COA, which lists the conditions? Yeah, that's just the application, Bill, it should. So as you can see, there were a couple of conditions that they had recommended to the applicant, and one of them was to replace all of the cedar fencing, not just the portion of it that was originally proposed. And there were some conditions for the actual addition itself. They would like to see that both options for the Eve gutter condition discussed were acceptable, and they wanted to keep the pole gutter on the existing bay, and have the applied gutter on the additional terminate on the corbelled brick cornice. Or remove the existing pole gutter and apply a gutter to the existing bay, which matched. So it all had to do with the gutters system on the addition itself for the presentation of that addition.
Any issues? Anyone in the audience have any comment? Put that on the agenda. Item number 19, other business. Item A, approve the May 19th, 21. Did someone speak up?
Don?
Yes.
It's Michael. I have one, one quick thing on other business.
Oh, hold on.
Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, Mike.
Oh, thanks. Hey, I, I reached out to Mike, uh, Perone last week, uh, with the suggestion that we put up a pride flag, uh, somewhere on Borough Hall. And he, uh, recommended that we as a full council approve that, if that's something that the rest of council is interested in doing. So I thought I'd bring that up this evening, whether, um, that's something the council would like to do for the remainder of the month of June.
Yes.
Sounds good, Lynn.
Mike, do you think we need to vote on that? Just FYI, if you're not holding down the microphone button, I can't hear anything.
Nobody's talking, so.
Yeah, we heard you.
I, I said no, I don't think we need to vote. If there's consent tonight, I mean, you know, council can just direct me to do it.
Cool. Hey, uh, Jordan said we could take it out of the mayor's budget, FYI, the cost of the flag, if we don't have one.
That's very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
If you need any help procuring, uh, something, uh, I have a family member who is a higher up in the HRC. So if you need materials, let me know.
Awesome.
Good.
That's all I had.
Okay. Uh, the last item is approve the May 19th, 2021, and May 26th, 2021 Borough Council meetings minutes. Consent. Unless there's anything else, uh, we're adjourned. Good evening, everyone.
I'll see you guys tomorrow.